Good evening. Welcome to the May 28, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We're going to have our customary moment of silence, but first I would like to talk about Alex Campbell, the park ranger who lost his life while trying to close the dam in Nishamoney Creek. So all of our emergency services, of course, were there to aid. We can always depend on them and all of the surrounding municipalities as well. I do want to say that Governor Shapiro ordered all flags to half-mast to honor him, and I thought that was a great thing to do, and I thank him for that. So if you could please join me in a moment of silence, greatly appreciate it. Okay. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
That brings us to our first round of public comment. If anybody has such, please state your name and where you live. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports of committees, boards, and commissions, and I will start since we have no committees to report tonight. I just want to mention that the borough has chosen to terminate our mutual contract for fire services unless something happens as of January 1st. They will have no protection. Of course, that will greatly affect their ability to get insurance for their homes, so I hope they take this very seriously. They have canceled planned meetings going forward, but I expect them to come back with their own calculations of service shortly. Also want to mention our volunteer firefighter tax credit. At our next meeting, Nick Weaver of the NFA will be here to report on calculations for our volunteer firefighter tax credit. You can expect that info will also be in your packet on the Friday before the meeting, and he will break it down in the way that we are all looking for, giving us all options and what will work best for them and for us. That's all I have for my report. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everybody who had a part to play in a successful Memorial Day parade and celebration here in Newtown. I think maybe our fellow board member had, Kyle had something to do with that from the American Legion, anyway. So, thank you, Kyle. And I'd like to acknowledge everyone who came out to vote last Tuesday on the 20th. So, thank you all for participating in democracy. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Thank you. On, on May 19, I attended the Bucks County Police Memorial Ceremony held at St. Andrews Church. This ceremony, organized by the Bucks County Police Memorial Committee, invited residents to join in honoring, honoring fallen soldiers, officers, sorry. The ceremony began with bagpipers entering the church, which is very nice. I also participated in the Memorial Day Parade and was actually able to get a little exercise in at the same time. Thank you.
Mr. Calabro.
I would like to echo the thanks to everyone for the Memorial Day Parade, especially the Township Borough Police and NFA and our emergency services, and the ambulance squad as well. It was well-attended, weather was great, and thanks for everyone for participating. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do with the various, all our various communities, community activities and community services that you are part of and that you help provide.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly. This is the, and we're on the record now, this is the application of CAVA, C-A-V-A, for a conditional use to operate a use E5 eating place and use E6 eating place drive-in at premises formerly occupied by Mod Pizza at 2938 South Eagle Road. I would like to mark preliminary Township Board Exhibit 1. Exhibit B1 will be the application and its attachments. Exhibit B2 is the CKS Engineers Review Letter dated April 8, 2025, and Exhibit B3 is proof of posting of the property with notice of this evening's hearing, and Exhibit B4 will be the proof of publication in the newspaper of tonight's hearing. We have Mr. Murphy representing the applicant. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening. As Dave said, this is an application that would allow the substitution of a new restaurant for the same restaurant space that already exists that was formerly occupied by Mod Pizza that backs up to Durham Road. We met in mid-April with your planning commission, received a favorable recommendation, subject to, as Dave said, compliance with the Township Engineer Review Letter of April 8. Dave was courteous enough to share with me a draft of a proposed conditional use approval resolution. We reviewed together the conditions that are outlined in it. They are all acceptable to the applicant. The use is nothing unusual. There's no unusual aspects of it as opposed to any other restaurant, especially Mod Pizza. It is a fast casual Mediterranean-style restaurant. And other than that, I know Dave typically would review and read the proposed conditional use resolution, and as I said, I'm accept, we would accept all the conditions outlined in that resolution.
Madam Chair, if the board's of a mind, I could frame a motion for the board's consideration, at which time we would ask the applicant if those conditions are acceptable, have any board questions or discussion, and then take public comment. If the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to grant the application of CAVA for a conditional use to operate a use E5 eating place and use E6 eating place drive-in at 2936 South Eagle Road, Newtown, PA, in the PC Planned Commercial District, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with the CKS Engineers Review Letter dated April 8, 2025. Two, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the design of the 42-inch-high black metal fence between the outdoor seating area and the public space shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning officer. Three, the hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to midnight and Sunday from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Four, there will be two shifts with a maximum of 20 employees per shift. Five, the use will not produce any noxious, toxic, or corrosive fumes, smoke, odor, or dust. There will be no loud noises or vibrations or objectionable heat, glare, or radiation beyond the property line, and the use will not create any other objectionable condition that will endanger public health and safety. Should this change, or if complaints are received in this regard by the landlord or the township, the applicant will take immediate steps to correct the conditions responsible for those environmental impacts and notify the landlord and township in writing how it will mitigate such conditions in the future. Further, there will be no outdoor speakers, intercoms, or music outside the establishment. Six, there will be no storage of hazardous, flammable, or explosive materials or waste on the site. Should this condition change, the applicant must immediately notify the landlord and the township of this fact, including the nature of the materials present in the building and the safety plan for their maintenance within the building. Seven, deliveries will be at such times so as not to interfere with the flow of traffic, parking, or access to surrounding businesses. Eight, the uses shall comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act and all related state regulations. Nine, the applicant shall provide the township with a copy of the lease between the applicant and the landlord. Ten, all fees and costs due to Newtown Township must be paid in full prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the township. Eleven, all signage desired by the applicant must conform to the standards established for the Newtown Shopping Center. And finally, twelve, the applicant's trash removal plan must conform to the trash removal plan adopted for the Newtown Shopping Center. And those are the conditions of the conditional use motion.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve CAVA at this time?
I can make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll sit.
Okay.
Are the, are the conditions acceptable?
They are. Mr. Murphy, are the conditions acceptable?
I'm sorry, the question was, wasn't asked, that's why.
That's correct. I appreciate that, Phil. Thank you.
One correction, Dave. I think the address...
Is 39, 2938.
Yep, not 36.
I was looking at something, maybe the application is?
No, I look too. The application was right, the review letter was right.
Okay.
I think it was a typo.
2938 South Eagle Road. Thank you.
Right. And yes, conditions are all acceptable.
So it's correct on the agenda?
Correct. Correct. I read it wrong.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
I just have one thing that maybe the solicitor could clarify and elaborate on. I know we list these all as eating places with drive-ins, so just that the public knows there is no drive-in, this is basically a technicality that we include on all these conditional use.
It's a technicality, absolutely. There is no drive-in where you drive your car and you order from a window. It's because there is some takeout service, but there is no use in the zoning ordinance that says "takeout." So it fits best within the eating place, drive-in use category.
Okay, correct. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that the condition, one of the conditions is that 42-inch fence, and that will be resolved.
Correct. The fence is installed, but there was a question about a detail in the fence, and it needs to be confirmed by your staff. It was a condition of the original Mod Pizza application. Fence was installed, but somebody had a question about it, so it needs to be resolved. Agreed.
Great.
Is there a change in seating? Is there more seating, less seating, or is it the same?
I would...
Less seating. Less seating. I think you were at the planning commission meeting, we talked about that. Significantly less seating. I think it's 38 inside and 17 outside. Significantly less than Mod's seating.
That's the only meeting I missed of the planning commission, but thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion from the board?
I have a question. Regarding signage that conforms to the Newtown Shopping Center, can you elaborate what that means?
Well, I believe that there is a sort of a model sign that there, that Brixmore imposed on everybody. Obviously, it's a black-and-white facade, and there's the size of the sign, obviously they have to comply with our zoning ordinance or they have to go to the zoning hearing board. So that's number one. But it also has to comply with the other signage in the, in the shopping center.
I think it's more than that, Dave. As part of a zoning matter, seven, eight years ago at the advent of the center, there was a comprehensive sign program that was approved that's very detailed, that has very specific limits of size of sign, location, backlighting, depending on where you are, how big the letters can be. So that is applied uniformly to the entire center. So it's...
Continuity purposes and nothing is massive and there's...
It's not on an ad hoc basis. It was done years ago, and it's followed through since.
Well, I was also interested in the limit on the number of signs.
There is.
I think Newtown has a limit of one business sign. Is that right?
I, John, I'm not sure I know all the details or remember them all from years ago, but there is a specific limit on the number of signs you're allowed to have based on the square footage, how much frontage you have, square feet of frontage along the retail space.
I didn't know it was based on square footage or anything like that. It was just only one business sign? You can't have signs in the window, that sort of thing?
There is. You're right. There is a prohibition about neon signs and...
Any kind of sign.
Yeah, window signs are limited, but for this, for this use, it faces Durham Road, and it also faces in toward the parking lot. So they're allowed to have one sign facing the road, the exterior road, and one sign on their facade facing the parking.
Okay, I get it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me? No, I'm sorry, I didn't know you still do.
The letter from CKS mentioned something, a temporary certificate of occupancy was issued. The restrictions for the seat must be resolved. I don't know what that means.
As a condition of the Mod Pizza conditional use approval, one of the conditions was the installation of the 42-inch tall fence.
42-inch what?
Tall fence.
Oh, okay.
That backs up along Durham Road. There was a detail attached as an exhibit to what that fence was to look like. Somebody raised a question about whether the fence, the 42-inch black fence, metal fence that was installed, matched the detail in that exhibit. That's what the issue is, and we agreed that no occupancy of this space could occur until that question was resolved.
And you're in the process of resolving?
We are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Correct.
Anything else from the board?
I just wanted to say something regards to the sign. They are going to be, it's the same sign as that was used by Mod Pizza.
Yeah.
And the only thing I can remember is that the signage that faces Durham Road would not be lit just not to conflict with the birches across the street.
I believe that's correct.
Correct.
Right. Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of authorizing CAVA to inhabit the space of Mod Pizza, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
We will close the hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Which brings us to our consent agenda. I would like to add that within the consent agenda, there you will see a business common sidewalk project payment certificate, number one. The amount of that is $168,000 and change, just in case anybody was wondering. So that being said, do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
Since you mentioned... I just had one question on the bills list. On page nine, there is a payment to the Newtown Fire Association for $83,834. I would just like to ask the manager, what does that entail, and what is that money used for by the Newtown Fire Association, since we're going through a lot of fire conversation recently? I just would like you to elaborate on that if you could.
So that payment is in accordance with the contract that the township currently has with the Newtown Fire Association. It is a, the first of three payments to the Fire Association out of the budgeted $250,000 that's in the fire protection fund. That money's generally used for operating expenses, insurances, fuel, things of that nature.
Okay. Is any of that money earmarked for any stipends to the firefighters?
I am aware that they do have a stipend program for the existing firefighters to provide incentives to respond to calls.
Okay. Is it possible to get an amount of what that stipend is? Because we are discussing giving them some sort of tax rebate and so on, but I'm just curious as to what they should, what they're getting now in regards to the stipend from the $250,000 that the township gives them.
Yeah, I can inquire for...
Okay. And of course, that stipend is only for new firefighters, so that doesn't apply to all the other firefighters, just to be clear.
Well, we're just talking about our firefighters, right?
Of course.
Okay, okay. No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
And then I had a real quick, on the minutes, since we'll be voting on this as a package, and I apologize that I didn't notice this sooner, but bottom of page one, it talks about the distracted driving ordinance. I believe that's a state law.
And is that not written as such?
It is mentioned as an, as an ordinance.
Okay.
And it really is a state law.
All right.
So it applies all over the state.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question. Page eight, video gold, fool's gold productions, consulting, equipment, et cetera, $5,594.50. I do hope this is the last bill we'll ever see from video gold. They install new speakers, is that true? Can everybody hear me out there? Can you hear me? Okay. All right. I just hope this is the last payment we make to them. Thank you.
I believe it is. Mr. Manager?
As far as I know, that is the final payment.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion from the board about the consent agenda? Okay. So I got a vote and a second discussion from the board. Is there any discussion from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to nothing, five to zero. Sorry. Okay, that, that brings us to reports of officials. We have no engineers report, no agenda items for the solicitor. Mr. Manager, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The general fund balance this evening is $6,275,137. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. We have two other agenda items for the board's consideration this evening, first of which is the annual authorization to sell used equipment. Public Works Directors compiled a list of saleable equipment from each department, so the appropriate motion would be motion to approve these, sell, sell used equipment in accordance with the Public Works Directors memorandum.
Do we have such a motion?
So...
Thank you very much. Any discussion from the board?
Just one, one quick question. Mr. Manager, these are sold, I see, through municipal bid or whatever you need.
Yeah, munis-a bid.
So just to, just so people understand, this, these aren't sold, like somebody can't come here and say, "I want to buy that."
No, it's through a bidding process.
Okay.
Sort of similar to eBay or one of those sites.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the board? Any from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the vote on the authorization to sell our used equipment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Final item, Madam Chair, is we have a proposal from Gorski Engineering to perform the building study for the fire department. Appropriate motion would be motion to approve the proposal from Gorski Engineering in the amount of $25,000 through Sourcewell for the fire building study.
Okay. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that. Any discussion from the board?
This is a budget item of 20,000, but they want to charge 25,000?
That's correct.
Since it's over budget, can't we negotiate to get it down to the budget level?
That's a maximum price.
Excuse me?
So it's a price, this is a price not to exceed 25,000?
That was a, a mention in the budget?
That was mentioned in their proposal, yes. So they'll invoice...
Not to exceed.
Right. They'll invoice up to 25,000. Now, keep in mind the payment for this is coming from the Fire Capital Fund. It's not coming from the general fund.
Okay. I was just wondering about the 3D model. I mean, why do we need a 3D model?
That was sort of my same sentiments, so we'll discuss that with them.
Yes.
The other thing is they said they wanted to visit the proposed or sites that may be reused. I know that there've been discussions in the past about Chandler Field being a particular site perhaps, or maybe the parking lot owned by the bank across from the old St. Math, St. Andrews Church. Why would they want to visit these sites to design a building? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't seem required to me.
What that is, is there needs to be a certain response time to each quadrant of the township. So they're going to look at...
Do they have to come out and visit and charge, I don't know, how many miles, how many dollars per mile, that kind of thing?
I mean, they'll look, they'll look into alternate sites. That's, that's what they're going to look at.
Right. But that's separate from the design of the building. This is just for that.
Just for the design of the building?
Yes.
Yeah, but they include that in the deliverables.
Right. They're going to do an analysis of potential sites where you can put a building.
Right.
But they're not only going to do an analysis, they said, "visit those sites."
Right. To see if it's feasible for development.
Could they use Google Earth, maybe?
Maybe. We can talk to them about it.
All right. Thank you.
It's very, very early in the process, so there's a lot to talk about with them about that. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the board? Any from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in, anybody?
I was just going to add, but I'm...
Yes, go ahead.
The item we just voted on before the sale of the used equipment in the budget, it was, that was slated for $10,000. And I look at this list, and I bet you that's going to be more than $10,000. So if there's a little cost overrun on the Gorski of 5,000, it's probably offset by the sale of the, of the used equipment. I was just going to point that out if it helps anybody vote for it.
Thank you for that. Very astute. No comment from the public? Okay, we'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of the proposal from Gorski in the amount of 25,000 for a fire building study, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
That's all we have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to our second round of public comment. Please state your name and where you live.
Still John DiApril, Newtown, Grant, Vegas, in the best. Different parts of the country, different nationalities and stuff, they have things that are, you know, mysticism, like the Middle Easterners have an amulet with a blue eye in the center, supposed to ward off evil eye, and Israelis, the Jewish people have the hamzah, was decorated sometimes with an eye in the middle. And my nationality, you know, we have the Malochia, or Maloix for slang, and been running on a little hard time lately, that's why I haven't been here. Anyone that wants to put a curse on me, and we have a thing that goes back, you know, and it's, anybody puts a curse on me, it's going right back to you. Okay, thank you. Also, you think that... Also, you think that with all the problems they had with social media, with one of your members, you think that you would be a little more careful? I mean, there's a Facebook account out there that nearly every day disparages Republicans. Now, as a supervisor, which you have right on there in your bio, which I wouldn't even bother if it wasn't there, you know, disparaging Republicans for years now. So I mean, this kind of two-faced attitude doesn't go, doesn't go with Newtown, never has. You know, wish you would straighten that out a little. You take the supervisor off for stop disparaging Republicans, how are we supposed to get a fair shot at anything when you feel like that? And it's constantly every day and has been for years. Way back when you were running for office, you know, I said, this kind of two-faced attitude doesn't go. Also, I'd like to say about boards and commissions, you're up here begging sometimes for people to join, you know, one of the, one of the volunteer boards. And, you know, not that I liked her, but when Ann Gordon, Ann Gorham was chair, she would send letters out, considered but not selected, you've been chosen, all that stuff. But that kind of professionalism seems like it went out the window. Another thing, another thing's wrong with this current board. Although I'd like to thank the board members that attended the Memorial Day Parade, of course Kyle's part of it, you know, which we appreciate. And, you know, two people didn't make it, you know, two people never make it. So I guess they don't like veterans. Anyhow. While I was gone, I see you entertained the people from Middletown complaining about a water treatment plant that's since been knocked down. And a lot of them said about, you know, water lines and lines going underneath their, near their property and stuff like that. Also, it was at the same time of the, the gas leak in Upper Make. And, you know, I'm just wondering how these people, even people, you know, people in the area, not just Newtown, Middletown, stuff like that, know what pipes run under their lots or neighborhoods and things like that. And it's awful odd because, you know, Middletown, Newtown's been around a long time, and I'm sure there's lines all over the place that gone unknown for years. That's all I could think of for now. Thank you.
I'm glad you're feeling better, by the way.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Todd McGonigal, Newtown Township. I was looking for clarification on the native tree ordinance that was discussed last meeting. Does that apply to residential or just, is this new construction? Is there any information about that?
We are just updating our tree list to make sure that it includes native trees now and taking off the ones that aren't native. That is for construction. And it is information in case people that live in the township would like to know what native trees are and which ones to plant to help the environment.
So that wouldn't affect, if I wanted to put something in my backyard as a private citizen, I would be allowed to do that?
Of course you'd be allowed to do that.
Okay, just good clarification. Thank you.
Valerie Mahalik, Newtown Walk. I'm just following up on where we're at with the mid-block crosswalk and the, you know, the actual poles and everything for the installation. Do we have a timeline for that at all?
Madam Chair, may I? The, the poles, because of their decorative nature, are on back order, so the contractor's waiting for them to be delivered. As soon as they're delivered, they'll be installed.
Do we know, like?
I don't have a timeline.
A timeline or anything?
No.
Okay. My second question is directed at Chairwoman Snyder. When we were at the sewer meeting before executive session, many of the people that were there asked if the sewer meetings could be moved to the evening. And I was wondering, since we all left before executive session, if that's something, you know, that you're considering? And I know a lot of people would be very appreciative, since a lot of people work during the day and can't attend a 3:00 meeting. And the other thing that was brought up was to have the meetings videotaped so that, again, if someone can't attend, just like these meetings, they can at least find it online. Was there any follow-up to that?
I can tell you that, like, I'll use myself as an example. I have meetings in the evening, so it would be very hard for me to switch a sewer authority meeting to, to the evening when I already have a meeting that evening. So just speaking personally, I can't do it. I would say the general inclination of the board that was there would be to say that they would like to keep it at 3:00. It was most convenient for all.
Okay, if that's the case, then could you look into at least having them televised so for people who want to, you know, see what's going on, they could either watch it at that time or go back like they can with the Board of Supervisors meetings and, you know, find it that way? Right now, there's no way for people to know, you know, what's being discussed unless you physically can be there.
I will certainly inquire into the feasibility of such.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on to other business. Is there anybody that has any other business, new or old?
Yeah, I have a question in regards to the, the whole thing with the sewer authority and the sewer plant. I would just like to know if this has been put to bed, because I know that there's been a lot of chatter out there, some of it has been made a campaign issue, and I know that this board has said that there was no way that this would be completed. But have we gotten any cooperation from the sewer authority that this is not going to be done? And have we gotten a letter from the sewer authority? Have we gotten any kind of proof from the sewer authority that they would abide by our, our wishes that this would not be moving forward? Because if anything, I would like to see at least this one issue put to bed so that we don't have to talk about it anymore and that residents don't have to worry about it or ask questions about it. It just seems that it's becoming redundant that we keep saying that, no, we don't want it done. But is that the case? Have we gotten any kind of proof from the sewer authority that they are going to abide by what we want? Because I think the final decision is in our hands, whether they like it or not. But, but I would like for them to at least acknowledge us that we do not want this done. And also, just to piggyback on the request of the times of the meeting and so on, that is not for this board to decide, that's for the sewer authority board to decide. And if they want to videotape the, the meetings, that's, that's within their budget, not within our budget. So I think those are questions that should be directed to the sewer authority, albeit at 3:00 or 3:30, you would have to show up to ask that question. So to ask our chairman that particular question is kind of unfair because she does not control the sewer authority. You would have to go there to ask them those questions and get those answers from the sewer authority. Even though it's called Newtown Joint Municipal, it's not part of Newtown politics or government. So I, I don't think that the chairwoman or anybody else that's on that board has any kind of authority to make those changes. The board as a whole has that authority. So, Ms. Mahalik, I think maybe you've been there, but those are the people you ask, not Ms. Snyder. I think that was kind of unfair to ask her that question.
I would just like to say, we did discuss it after you asked it there, and we did come to a consensus that it wasn't convenient. Now, again, I'm saying for myself, I'm saying for the other people that were there that generally agreed with that. So, I mean, I guess we can put that in writing. As far as the death of the sewer facility, it is indeed dead. We are waiting from the courts to let us know how we can officially say that. There are certain ways we have to say that. We have to wait and hear from them. For that, it has to get in front of a judge, and many things have to be decided there as far as who gets the land back. And of course, we want to give the land back if it's possible for them to pay us back for it. But I can assure you that it is dead. I know there's wording that you want used that maybe we haven't used, but I can tell you that there will be no plant. You've asked us at the sewer authority the same question. I've answered everybody with the same answer, and that is, there is no way on, excuse me, God's green earth that this plant will be built. So how it works in the courts, we have to wait and see how they want us to, to do that, how they want us to so-called put a lid on it.
Madam Chair, just in response to Mr. Claver's comment, I don't think Ms. Mahalik's comments were unfair. If this board votes to appoint one of our members to that board also, I think you have to expect a question coming to this board to remember on that board.
And I don't mind.
Obviously, she can't answer the question.
I don't mind answering.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
But the member that belongs to that board should be answering that question while she's sitting on that particular board. This is the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, not the sewer authority board. Yes, she's on that board, but she speaks right now as a board supervisor, not as a member of the, the board of, on the sewer authority. When she's on the sewer authority at one of those meetings, she could be asked that question. I haven't, I don't see anything wrong with that. But to put somebody on the spot because they sit on a particular board and to ask questions that technically, whatever she says here right now about, about the sewer authority means nothing, because it's what the board of, the board on the sewer authority decides is what counts, not what she says here.
Understood.
Okay?
I don't disagree with you on that.
Okay. So, yes, I do think it was unfair to ask that question because Ms. Mahalik is very astute to where the question should be directed, and it should be directed to the sewer authority board, not the board of supervisors. Also, I think some corrections would be that we are not selling the property, because I think when, when people use the word "we," they think it means the board of supervisors. We don't own that property, we can't sell that property, so that property's not ours. Again, it's the sewer authority's property, not ours. So for us to even talk about that property is even improper, because we cannot speculate how much the property is going to be assessed for, how much, how much we can, how much they, not we, they could accept for it. So we're mixing, we're mixing boards here, and that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be the case. We are the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors, they are the board, they are the sewer authority board.
Okay, speaking about our business, there's one Newtown supervisor, one Newtown resident who's not a member of the sewer authority board, and we are supposed to assign a member to fill that vacant position. Right now, the sewer authority has a three to two majority from the borough. All three of those from the borough were in favor of building this plant. And now we're in a three to two majority. We have a letter from somebody who volunteered to be named to that board. Have we done anything? I know I was on vacation for a while, did I miss that?
Can I just say, we have many letters for people that want to be.
I haven't, I've only seen one. Only one has been distributed to me, as far as I know. How many letters were received?
Six, at least.
Six? Well, how, how come the board hasn't seen all six?
Well, I think, have some members of the board seen them? I know.
Why not all members?
I've seen.
I just got one. Not saying that we should name him, but we have to name somebody. I wear three to two disadvantage with the borough.
Gotcha.
And the borough's going to put us over a barrel with the fire agreement. I guarantee you that. You're going to have a, a real argument on your hands. And then they're going to decide, oh, let's change what we said and build this plant. If they have a three to two vote, what's, what's the alternative?
You're right, and definitely right in some things you say, and I can assure you that shortly that spot will be filled. We're going through those applicants to see who.
Well, you have to send me all those applicant, you have to send all of us, all those applicants. We are supposed to make that decision, right?
Is that true?
As a board.
I remember Dennis appointed me, so.
We vote on who to.
Well, I can certainly accumulate that list and send it around for everybody to see.
I don't, only want the list. You said you got the letters. I'd like to see the letters.
I think they, like.
Just as a clarification, the, the board votes on that, it's not, it's not a strict appointment from the chair. I'm looking at our solicitor.
No, that would be a board vote.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and I'd like to have that vote. If there are six applicants, we need to act on this ASAP. But I don't know who to vote for. I only have one letter from one person who looks qualified, but just saying.
John, would you like that position?
Oh, yeah, I'd love it.
No, I'm being serious, we can vote on it right now.
Are you shitting me?
No.
I'm going to add that, I'm going to add that to my comedy routine.
We can appoint, we can.
This Friday at the Comedy Cabaret.
We can appoint a supervisor right now at this, at this meeting.
You don't have to appoint supervisor. You appoint any resident of Newtown. It just has to be a resident of Newtown.
I'm just saying, if you're concerned.
I am not interested.
Okay, that's all you need to say.
I am retiring.
I know the rules in regulations.
I am retiring from public service, everybody. I will start a podcast series, I will do other things, comedy routines, but serving on boards, you can forget about it.
Well, it's good.
As they say in New York, forget about it.
Mr. Davis, would you like to be on the sewer authority?
Absolutely not, thank you.
Okay. Dennis, would you like to be on the sewer authority?
The point is, we have to appoint somebody.
Wasn't thinking about it at this time.
What do we have to point? Dennis, Dennis or any of us haven't been vetted that we know what all of us do here?
Excuse me?
But I don't think we're looking at a supervisor unless they.
No, we don't have.
Well, Mr. Mank is concerned about the three to two majority on the other side, so if we want to appoint someone very quick, we could do that right now.
I didn't say very quick. I said, in the very right way, if there are six letters, I need to see them to be able to vote.
So.
We got six or seven applicants, according to.
I thought they were sent to all supervisors, but apparently not, so I will make sure.
Obviously, some things don't get sent to all the supervisors, which I'm very concerned about.
I don't know why.
Which I think if the one supervisor gets an application, it should be forwarded to all the other supervisors.
Yeah, maybe have to file my, my own write-to-know request.
I will, I will make sure they're all sent to everybody.
Jesus Christ.
I do think that we might be able to appoint someone soon. I wouldn't take it upon, I would.
Can we have it on the agenda, next meeting agenda?
If we are prepared for it, then yes.
Well, get those letters sent out to everybody so we can be prepared for it.
I hear you, but there's a couple more people that are asking if they could.
You got six people. How many more people do you need to apply?
Well, why shouldn't we allow all people that want to?
You know more than I do about, what are the people? Tell them to send the letter in, like everybody else.
Yes.
What are they waiting for?
They're doing that at this time. So I said that I would wait for them to do so. I think two weeks is the amount of time that I was thinking, that the chair of the sewer authority was thinking, that we would go over those and have you guys go over those and then pick somebody.
Well, the, the.
So would that be okay, two weeks?
The sewer authority doesn't pick anybody, so they don't even have to see the applications. Just the board of supervisors.
Correct. It's up to us.
It's up to us.
Okay.
They have, they have no say who we put on there. We do. When is the next sewer authority meeting, by the way?
Tuesday. Tuesday?
The 15th, or, I don't know.
Second Tuesday in the month, yeah.
At 3:00, not 3:30.
But then we won't, we won't be in session before the sewer authority meeting.
The day before, we'll be in session, the sewer authority will be in session the day before, and then we'll have a meeting the day after.
So even on that, day of that meeting, we are still outnumbered?
Correct.
I would say, I see no inclination from the borough to push anything any certain way to our disadvantage at this time. They have never said they would, now they could, so we will make sure it's taken care of as soon as possible. That I can promise.
I don't know, I don't trust those borough people.
I, I tend never to make promises that I know cannot be kept, and I'm not saying you're, what you're saying, your inclination may be correct, but I just know if I sat on a 3 to 2 in favor and we wanted it, I'd push that vote right through. And they're not doing anything wrong.
Well, they're also going to lose a board member as well, so they can't even figure out who they want to appoint. So we're both in the same position.
But we officially do not have a board member. She resigned already. She's not even on the board. They could be in the process of losing all three, but as long as all three are still there, they have the voting power at the moment. And I, and I think that we kind of dropped the ball. It should have been on the agenda tonight, since we could have appointed somebody tonight, and I just think that we're going to be at a disadvantage. I mean.
Can we appoint somebody, and that person can resign after that meeting, and you appoint somebody else?
I don't see why not.
Okay, appoint me.
All right.
I'll sit there for one meeting, and then I'll resign.
Hold on.
Yes, please.
Maybe you'll like.
It's not, this is not on the agenda.
Yes, it's not.
Tonight, the best you could do is ask to have it placed on the next agenda. It's got to appear here, consideration of appointment of authority member, and you could do it at that time.
By that time, I'll be long gone. Sorry.
If this is done on there.
My offer only holds for tonight.
It can't be done because it's under other business?
No, not because it's under other business. It's because it's not listed specifically as an agenda item in and of itself. Could be under the manager's report, could be under my report.
I just spoke about the, putting the issue to bed, so to speak. That's not on the agenda.
You can, it's, you can discuss anything you want, you just can't take action if it's not listed on the agenda. Those are the most recent amendments to the Sunshine Law.
Well, the cat's out of the bag now.
So we're not, we're not going to have an appointment for that meeting anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Well, we were past public comment, but seeing that you're standing there, I don't see any reason not to give you a chance to.
Well, I want to clarify what was said. First of all, at the meeting, the person who put in to be on the sewer board was at the last sewer meeting, and he asked, when would a decision be made? He happens to be an engineer, very well-educated, and he was told a decision would not be made till next fall, so. And it was my understanding, when a member sits on a board, whether it's planning board, EAC, that they give reports to the residents, which is why I asked my question. If Todd can come up and ask a question about the EAC and trees, residents can't come up and ask a supervisor who sits on a board, be it the sewer board, a question? And the reason I asked the question is, we were told they would be discussing this in executive session, and being that the next meeting is next month, we were hoping that it might have been moved to the evening. So I wanted to clarify the reason why I was asking, since we were not there after executive session, and wanted to see if there was a decision that the meeting would be moved to the evening for next month, just so you understand.
I don't want to have a discussion, but can you repeat what you said? There was somebody at the meeting.
Yes.
Who applied to be on that board.
Yes.
And somebody on the board of the sewer authority said that decision won't be made until fall, and when they don't have the authority to make the decision? Who said that?
I did.
Chairwoman Snyder.
Why would you say that?
Because we were thinking, I will say "we," as I put my other hat on for the sewer authority, that to give people, there's many people that wanted to do it, why not give them a chance? And, you know, we're not doing anything at the sewer authority that requires any decision, so.
Oh, my God. Are you kidding me?
We were just trying to let the people that wanted to apply.
You're shitting me? Are you shitting me? I got to put this in my comedy routine. This is too funny.
We're going to have to bleep you off YouTube.
Go ahead.
No, no, Ms. Mahalik, thank you for.
Well, really, it's the first time I've been.
Thank you for the clarification.
And no, we did not have an executive session about anybody that was going to be on the sewer authority.
Oh, I didn't say that. I wasn't, I didn't say that at all. My, what my comment was, was the board had discussed, and there were a lot of people in the room that day, about moving the meetings to the evening, because someone had mentioned that they, a lot of people can't attend the meetings, because it's in the middle of the afternoon. The other question that was brought up at the meeting was that the meetings are not videotaped, so if a person cannot attend the meeting, they have no idea what's going on. The gentleman, so that's one thing, right? That's what, what we were trying to find out. That's what I was asking, what the outcome was from executive session, if the meeting for the next month was moved to the evening. And now I know it is no. So it's the second Tuesday, 3:00 normal time. The other issue about the person who's an engineer who asked if he would be, when you would be making a decision, and he attended the meeting, he was told it would be in the fall. That had nothing to do with executive session. Two separate things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say that I reached out to every single person that applied to tell them that we would be making a decision shortly, and so I responded to every single person, and.
But I think what Mr. Mack is, and I'm not saying you did anything incorrectly, but I think what Mr. Mack's concerned is, why didn't the rest of us get the? No individual supervisor should be accepting applications for anything. They should be going to the township. I mean, we all have friends out there that we want maybe to see on boards, but they shouldn't be sending it to me.
Okay.
They should be sending it to Olivia, or to Mica, and then they distribute it to us. I just think that, that, that's, that's always been the process, that's always been procedure. None of us, none of us should be accepting applications or resumes just for, and holding it for ourselves, without it being officially distributed from the administration. And I think that's what maybe Mr. Mack's aggravation is. I don't, I'm not trying to read his mind, but.
Well, I'm going. I'm going to be entirely honest and say, this is the first time I've ever come across this situation, so not knowing what the right thing to do was, or if there was anything different that I should do, I had no idea about that. So if that's what you say, I take you seriously, and I will make sure you, everybody has it.
Well, there was a public notice on the homepage of the township site that said anybody interested in serving on the sewer authority should send a letter and resume or whatever to Olivia, and it gave the email address. It didn't say, send it to X person on the board of supervisors. So if nobody sent it to that address, there's no other, there's nobody else except that one person officially who has applied, is my opinion. And if you have six letters from somebody else, tell them, get off your ass, and send it to Olivia as indicated by our website. That is the procedure, not to communicate with you personally.
Okay. I, I had no idea how to handle it, really.
It's on the website.
I didn't look on the website, and I wasn't given any direction as far as.
I know, just you, like many other people, don't look at the website, and we're just wasting our money on the website. How much money did we spend on that website?
Not much.
Not enough.
All right. As everyone has asked, I will do exactly that. Is there anybody else that has anything to say this evening, under other business? Hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.